Meeting order. Abby, are you taking the role?
Yes, if you're fine, I'd like to just note all members present.
No problem. That sounds good to me.
Easy enough.
Wait a minute, I got a new agenda here, too.
Yes, there is a revised agenda.
So we have a revised agenda. So first up, we have a new member to Planning Commission, Martin here, and we'll give him his oath, and then he will join us up on the day I see. And just for the record, Abby asking if I want a stool for this.
If you want me to get on my knees, that's okay, too.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Martin Huyman.
I, Martin Huyman.
Huyman. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Planning Commission for the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
The duties of the Planning Commission for the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
The best of my judgment and ability.
The best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for joining the Planning Commission.
You're welcome.
I want to take a picture with you. Abby, are you taking pictures?
I do.
We did take one.
But we can get a couple here if we'd like.
What is my issue?
Do we want to get it? Do we want the whole commission? No, forget.
If you go up there.
All right.
No, not at all?
She's not afforded. Can I afford a genetic picture thing?
Jesse, I'll have to hear one.
Hi, I'm Jesse.
Okay, I had a random meeting or help call. Random meeting at the moment.
All right, I ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion, or I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have come to the time of the open forum. We ask if anyone would like to speak to any issue at all. That please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and then spend a couple minutes giving us your thoughts. Once we've heard from everybody, we will close the open forum and move on to our consent agenda. So would anyone wish to speak to the Planning Commission tonight? Seeing no one come forward, we will move to item six, Consent Agenda Considerations. There's one item, A, approved a minute from the regular meeting of April 9, 2025. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, or I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions? One abstention?
Oh, sir, I apologize. I should have abstained also.
So we have three ayes and three abstentions. All right, we'll move to item 8A, or PUD, Concept Plan Review for the Forest Lake Garage Condos, PID 20.032.21.13.0006, Hall Marine, PG 25-1316. For those who are newer on the Planning Commission or maybe not have dealt with a concept plan, these are when we meet with the developer, they present their ideas, and we provide input to the developer on how we think this will move forward with the city, if they need to make changes, if there's some issues. It's really a free-flowing give-and-take conversation. We will take no vote when it's done. And by the time we are finished with this, the applicant should have a pretty good idea of where the Planning Commission sits. So I believe Abby, you're presenting.
Thank you, Chair. Just had to get a little AV tech out of the way first. Austin Hallberg of Hallberg Marine has submitted for Planning Commission Concept Plan Review to develop vacant land along Forest Road North. This is just north of the city's owned airport. What would be proposed is the subdivision of 30 acres into two parcels, a 23-acre parcel on the north, so that's the right-hand side of what you're looking at on your screen right now, if you're looking at the big screens. That would include up to, but probably not, 150 garage condo units. I think the staff report did indicate 112, but the narrative does indicate 102... 150. It would also include 3,000 square feet of business office kind of flex space. It's still open, but speculative, and some outdoor storage. The seven-acre parcel on the, what's on the left side of this screen, down below here, would be a sub-industrial building with outdoor storage. So for those speculation buildings, those uses would need to conform to the code. Nothing's being proposed at the moment unless there was some sort of PUD requiring different types of land uses or a PUD amendment for different types of land uses. The property is industrially zoned. Industrial condo multi-tenant structures are permitted in our zoning code. Outdoor storage outright is not allowed, but it is allowed as an accessory use to some of the other types of uses that are allowed in the industrial district, like a contractor service yard. The other types of uses that aren't identified but kind of speculative, the office, light manufacturing, all the warehousing, all of those things are allowed in the industrial zoning district, and we just utilize that kind of either building permit review or potentially a site plan review process to out those uses in the future. The property is in the airport overlay district. The land use and density is just fine. Building heights are usually the biggest thing with relationship to the airport overlay district. As of now, we don't see any conflicts with that airport overlay. We do believe that this is, it needs to be, and the applicant probably indicated it in their memo or their application letter, this would be a planned unit development. The city's code requires a planned unit development overlay whenever there is more than one building on a property. It's a little bit unique, but planned unit developments, generally speaking, are a tool to use for site creativity. Really, what we want to try to do with a planned unit development is develop the site as it's best needed, how it might not strictly, when it might not strictly apply, or the zoning code might not strictly meet the zoning code requirements. It allows for flexibility, but in that flexibility, the city does indicate that we do want to see that there are some public benefits to PUDs as well. Parkland dedication noted in the comprehensive, or in the subdivision regulations of city code, 5% of the net developable acreage, which is about 1.15 acres, would be required for dedication. This isn't an area that the city would be seeking any land dedication, so we'd be working with the developer on some sort of cash contribution potentially in lieu of parkland dedication. When it comes to the street layout, so street layout, access and parking, there are a few challenges noted on the site plan. The property line actually extends into Forest Boulevard North, so there would be land that would need to be plotted for Forest Boulevard North. Forest Boulevard North is also an underdeveloped roadway, so we'd want to be seeing that improved, very much like we required with interstate properties just to the north of this. There are some access point concerns with, I guess I didn't even walk through this, guys. I got a little rusty not seeing you for a while, so it's good that I'm back to be able to refresh my memory on how to present to Planning Commission. So there is a primary access point for those garage condos in between the two kind of commercial flex areas. The developer is really seeking to have one secure access point into the garage condo facility. The secondary, kind of smaller lot to the south, does propose two access points. Forest Road North is designed as a major collector road, and the two access points into this property are of a concern to the city and to the engineering, meeting the engineering standards. We do indicate we'd want to see these combined, and we'd also want to see an emergency access at a minimum exit or entrance into the garage condo facility. Really, more than anything, we want to be able to have a second means in or out if there was some sort of hazard blocking the only entrance in. Parking for the facility, parking for the flex office spaces, or however these will end up, it's hard to tell if it meets parking standards. Probably does. Each of these units are going to have parking inside their buildings themselves, inside these garages. These parking, this parking space is really designed to serve these commercial industrial uses, but also to probably provide for a little bit of visitor overflow parking. A couple challenges just with the code is that our code does require parking is behind buildings. This is one of those unique areas where the city has authorized and permitted parking in front of buildings, and this could be one of those areas that we could be more flexible on to accommodate for the site design. We do talk about, I believe in our staff report, but if not, something that we'll want to talk about with the developers, potentially putting some overflow parking in the secured area. Not going to say there'll be a few garage parties, but there could be. How do we accommodate for maybe more vehicles that aren't in their garages, but can be outside the garages? There is sufficient parking space, though, to have parallel parking in front of the garages, on the side of the garages, and still have driveline width through here. Architectural standards, likely there'll be some discussions on flexibility. Right now, they're being proposed, the structures are being proposed to be 100% metal. The code does not allow for 100% metal. I do think that when our city code design standards were developed, metal wasn't maybe as architecturally detailed as it can be today, and there are ways that we can design, maybe able to design, that does help break up mass, long wall panels, those sorts of things. There are some areas of the concept plan that we can't necessarily assess at this time, things like, though, like trails and sidewalks, they're not going to be required, but things like stormwater ponds, landscaping, wetland impacts, they're going to require additional information, additional review, so we just note those in our staff reports. On a high level, tonight, your purpose is to provide high-level comments and have a discussion with the developer. These are non-binding comments, but this helps the applicant then move forward with some middle of preliminary plots and plans to come back to the Planning Commission City Council. This is scheduled for the Planning Commission's June 23. City Council's June 23 meeting, I believe. I'd have to look. It's the last city council meeting in June to also get some non-binding comments. So Austin Hallberg of Hallberg Marine is here to discuss this with you. Any questions for me or for the applicant?
Questions to the staff?
Yes.
Because of the way that 97 is being changed, it's going to be fairly important that Forest Road south of this particular location be improved if this is going to be in place, just to be able to get in and out. This is not something that's in the city's plans, and, but for this facility with what I expect is a fairly large traffic. Have you had discussions with the developers about that remaining section of Forest Road down to 202nd?
We have had discussions about all of the under-improved portions of Forest Road with the adjacent landowners. As you remember, you recently, or in the last year, approved plans for interstate company expansion, so the city has been working through agreements with interstate about the improvement of Forest Road in that location.
To the north?
To the north. This developer is aware that the improvement of the roadway is going to be required, but they, as well as the landowner to the north and the city staff, don't think three piecemeal projects is in the best interest of the public sector and this roadway. So as we work through this project, I don't doubt there's going to be ongoing conversations about that improvement of that roadway, but, and, I don't believe that the city could require them to improve roadway beyond their property line. Also, simply because we didn't contemplate that with a property to the north, knowing that they would also have considerable more traffic coming in through there.
As somebody who lives on a dirt road, I, and this is essentially...
It's not, though. It's double-chip sealed, I believe. It's not great, but it's holding up. It is not a dirt road, though. It's under-improved.
Okay. Our policy on improvement of those roads, what is the assessment rate?
I don't know at the top of my head.
But typically, the adjacent property owners will be assessed?
They will need to pay for the portion adjacent to their properties if this becomes a public project.
Abby, on the large parcel, which I think is actually parcel two, they talk about those two buildings and having outdoor storage.
Yeah, sorry, I should have pointed that out. That's kind of, it's not adjacent to the two buildings, but it's up in, not up in, down in the southwest corner, which is being shown in the upper left-hand corner of your, of the plan. So there is an outdoor storage area being proposed up here.
And you can get there from here?
You can get there through kind of a driveway access in this location.
Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you.
Yep, I should have pointed that out.
That's all right.
Again, I'm a little rusty with you guys, so.
Other questions, Martin?
Yeah, that outdoor storage, is that going to be, if it faces a road, is it going to be covered up so, like when people bring their RVs and their motorcycles and their boats and stuff, and won't be visible to the roads?
With the, great question. With the land uses that we allow for outdoor storage, we do require screening. That screening hasn't been vetted right now, and so we would require some sort of screening, what that looks like, not really sure. It's likely this would be visible from Highway 61 because we have some grade changes through there, but right now, I couldn't tell you what that screening would be. But yes, screening would be required to help minimize those views.
Thank you.
Other staff questions? Hearing none, would the applicant like to come forward and spend a couple minutes, tell, giving us your vision here, and then we'll have a discussion with you. How's that sound?
All right, so my name is Austin Hallberg. I'm a third-generation family member, leading the Hallberg organizations, including boat dealership, storage operation, and commercial real estate. Today, I'm here as applicant for the garage condo development, and we're really excited to introduce it. I firmly believe that this project would be great for the community. This development serves the needs of residents who need additional space for vehicles, power sports equipment, boats, RVs, and it also serves the needs of business owners who are looking for small and affordable spaces to own or lease for their business operations. I'd like to introduce our development leader, Scott, to come up now to field any questions or elaborate on the project.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner, Scott Peterson, 8860 152nd Street, Hugo, Minnesota, representing Austin and the applicant here and some of the development team. Happy to answer your questions specifically. Appreciate Abby and her team work to date here on kind of what's in front of you.
Question to the applicant?
Somebody else want to go first?
Sure, I have a question. What was the decision on only one entrance? With that many garage complexes and people coming in, especially on, you know, weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when you're talking about having storage facilities for recreational, the last thing I can see is one entrance and exit at the same place. Is there a reason for that?
It's primarily security, right? So that's a single point of entrance. It'll be gated, it'll be key control, it'll have security cameras as well. And then we also thought from a sense of arrival, it's a better sense of arrival for the end user, the end visitor, the owner to come into a, to a single point of entrance there. Now, we understand staff's comments on a potential secondary emergency exit, but when you look at this from a circulation standpoint, and you look at the average drive widths, I mean, we're over 50 to 60 feet wide between buildings. That's larger than most regular roads as well, so we're not concerned about overall circulation of vehicles.
Not even a secondary exit, so one way in, one way out?
I think that's, I think that's where we're probably going to end up, is a secondary exit or a proof of an emergency exit. Correct. Yeah, and I do think you've got a unique pattern of hours here, right? You've got some people just Friday, Saturday, you've got some people Monday, Tuesdays, you've got some people in the evenings, some people in the mornings. So I think part of that will be developed as we, as we understand the build-out.
Don?
I was not able to zoom in and blow this up on my, on my screen, but I see you are, because I couldn't see dimensions when I was at home, anyway.
Sure. Do you want me to go?
You're okay with where you are now. So number one, are there any public restrooms in here?
There are not, no. So this will be part of an HOA. We'll be governing this property, and so there are going to be some public restrooms that are part of kind of an amenity structure. And if you can see, I think Abby, if you're directing, if you go just to the north there by those kind of four or five picnic tables in the middle, yeah, we've got kind of some outbuildings. There are notches on the side of the buildings where there'll be some restrooms. Some of these units may also have restrooms built into them as well. They'll be plumbed.
Okay, so help me with the vision here of garage condos. I'm familiar with storage units. You open up the garage, you put whatever inside, you lock it. But these are units where, like if I have a classic car and I want to work on it, you know, I can, I can go into this garage, there's electricity, there's heat probably. I don't know, maybe have a coffee maker, maybe have a grill, you know, and have friends over on the weekend and grill out. Is that the kind of thing? That's what these can be used for, right?
Yeah, potentially. So it's a, it's a secondary space that somebody is purchasing, right? It's a condominium, it's for ownership, right? And so there'll be a deeded parcel to it, that's why it's got an HOA management component to it, right? And that HOA document ensures and protects kind of everybody's interest here long-term on what they're investing in. These can be built out to whatever you desire them to be, right? And so what we're proposing is anywhere from, you know, 800 square foot up to 3,000 square feet. That's why the unit counts, anywhere between up to, close to 150, depending on how those demising spaces become. But you're exactly right. Some people are using them to store cars, some people are using them to, to put a really nice golf simulator in there, and some people are storing just equipment in there.
Just thinking out loud here, I wonder if you would have any issues, use issues, of someone renting one unit and the other unit, well, maybe as something much more noisy. Maybe they're using, you know, rivet guns and noisy equipment, and someone's not, if they're, because they're so close together, you know, adjacent to each other. That's just one off the top of my head thought. Is there a time of use limited? You know, you're limited to, you know, eight, whatever, 10 o'clock at night to 8:00 in the morning, and then otherwise, it's locked off, or is it 24 hours? I own, if it's a condo that I own, I assume I can come in and use it anytime.
Yeah, so access is 24 hours a day. In terms of the uses, we'll delineate that and define that through the HOA documents, right? As you can see, there is really no outdoor space. I mean, this is, you know, unit-contained inside of your space, and that's how those kind of rules and regulations inside the HOA operate.
I have two questions. I've been down to the garage condominiums down at Columbus there. You know, they got kitchens in them, bathrooms in there. They're really sweet setups. Clearly above my pay grade, but I have nice friends. Are these going to be comparable, or are, somewhere, I think, in your write-up, it was said that you're going to bring it down a little bit, so I think that Don is, are we looking at, most people are storing, or some people are going to have kitchens and bathrooms in there, and then we have the whole question, how do we make sure no one's living there?
Yeah, yeah. No, those are all great questions. You know, we've toured that Columbus property, Garage Solutions, as well. I think from an exterior element, it's very similar, and I think that's reflected in the presentation and the pictures here. I think from a sense of arrival and the single gate, very similar, right? You've got gated entrance, secure gated entrance, similar build-out of those units. You know, those units are the entire gamut, the entire spectrum. You have just a car, you have somebody who has a car and a hoist and a hose bib and a welder, and then you've got people that have built a $100,000 bar perhaps in there, right? And so those are all allowable build-out uses inside of that association's HOA. And so that is the regulating document that will be used, and that'll be reviewed by title, that'll be reviewed by lenders. I mean, that's the document that's going to put in place the restrictions of this use. And obviously, there are city restrictions as well inside of some of those zoning classifications.
My last question is my restrictions. You know, when you go over to the Columbus one, there's no one parked outside unless they're in the unit, so there's no outside storage in front of these garage doors for their boat in the winter, or...
Correct.
You know, you get so much space, and we always grow to that and then some.
Yeah, and if I understand your question, is it regards to outdoor storage in front of units?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not our intent here at all, and that's why I think you've, we've been purposeful in moving that outdoor storage away from the actual buildings. Our intent is people are either in their unit, or they're parked out in front of their garage, in front of their designated space, and that's it. There's no true outdoor storage in front of actual units.
Okay.
I got a question before Susan asks it. Snow removal.
There are a couple areas, but they're really little.
So as long as you've thought about it, and, because it will be an issue, I am guessing. But, I see, a little area, but yeah, it's a small area.
Yeah, and again, we'll further define that as well through our, you know, stormwater management and everything. Correct, yes.
Okay, so the definition of a dwelling unit is it has room, it has a bathroom, and it has a kitchen. And these are condos. I own them. So if I have a kitchen and a bathroom and a place for my comfy couch, and I own this property, why can't I live there?
Well, I think that's not what we're trying to sell and invest here, right? So for us, it's not a place of permanent residence. That's not what we're advertising, that's not what we're selling. Us is, this is your, this is your third stall at your house, right? This is your, instead of building a garage at your house, or, I live in the city, I don't have the zoning to build when I don't have the place to build it. This is how we're doing that? You know, the word condo, I think, can be misleading. The condo isn't in the sense of a condo for ownership. The condo is the legal description of for sale versus rent, right? It's a condominiumized development deal, which means you've got a plat, and then you've got to distinguish and define additional real estate as you go to build out these units, and then you've got condominiumized floor plate, right? So here, you have a building footprint, right, which would be one parcel, and then that parcel will get further subdivided for each demising wall, right? So you have an individual PID parcel per site, right? So that's, that's what we're selling, is the ownership of that, that wall, space, that floor, that ceiling, right? I think condo can be a little misleading in that, in that aspect.
But I own it. I've got, I've got a PID. I, I pay the county my property tax on that PID, like any other property. It is mine.
Wouldn't the zoning cover it?
So your zoning code would prohibit that, because we don't allow for residences in our industrial district. And as a planned unit development, we would record a document that indicates where we're allowing for concessions, use allowances, that sort of thing, that gets recorded to the underlying property and carries to every other parcel that's created thereafter. So you, the city would, zoning code would restrict it, and we can put it right on the deed-recorded approvals that would restrict it. Now, anywhere that we approve any use, Susan, somebody can violate the law.
Across the street from me. It is what it is. But I just want you to understand that, I understand your intent. I also have a reasonable understanding of human nature. So that's, that's, that's going to be very interesting. So that's, that's, that's going to be very interesting. I am concerned about the interior maintenance. You've got a lot of impermeable roof area. I think that the stormwater calculations are going to be really critical as this thing moves forward. And you don't have enough space to be pushing your snow, in terms of just the physical needs of pushing the snow. You're, you're pretty much narrow spaces, and on a good snow year, those, those are going to fill up fast. I really think it's adorable and cute, and I love these little grill areas there. That's, that, to me, then that's more like a little neighborhood, with a little neighborhood park. But that's, I, I think that's really interesting. I am a little concerned about the width of your driveway and the access of your driveway, going back to that outdoor storage area. That's fairly narrow, it's right on your property line. And again, depending on where you're going to be needing your stormwater and the size of your stormwater facility. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing your next plans for that. The, the parking stalls that you've got out front, if these are going to be like a landscape company has, buys one of these for the storage of their stuff. I'm assuming that your individual parking stalls are going to be oversized, just because the folks that are going to be using these are going to have, you know, 250s and 350s and oversized vehicles. And so I'm assuming that some of your parking stalls are going to be a little bit larger than normal.
Yeah, Commissioner, two things, I want to go back to one thing you said earlier. We are trying to build a community here, right? And whether these are outdoor enthusiasts or car enthusiasts, I mean, this is, this is maybe their lake, this is maybe their cabin, right? They come here, and so that, that is important to us. And I think when we come back and you'll see us develop this, we are going to put our best foot forward in trying to create that ongoing to protect everyone's investment in this. You know, these, these front two buildings, they're about 15,000 apiece, you know, business office, flex office, we really think this is a need for, I'll call them neighborhood businesses, like a landscaping company, right? Right now, maybe they're at the owner's house and the workers are showing up, they're leaving six, seven cars there, and they're taking two or three big trailers. And guess what? Those two or three big trailers are really the, the main assets of this entire company, right? Maybe they've outgrown it, and they're no longer doing QuickBooks at their dinner table, right? And so we envision these first two buildings potentially servicing that, right? And so it's hard to answer the questions up front on those parking spots, because I envision that as like a little bit of front-of-house guest, but if I'm looking for a landscape bid, I don't necessarily go to the landscaper's office, right? They come over to my house, just like a painter would, et cetera. So I'm, we're, we're not sure what those uses are. We just think for the max flexibility, excuse me, of who potentially could be some of these users, we need to have some sort of front-of-house parking. If these are employees, we would envision them going through the private security gate, the doors open in the back of their space, and they're most likely parking inside their unit as they pull their trucks out for the day. Haven't quite worked through that, but that's kind of our thesis at this point.
Okay. I, I am a user at the Hallberg facility in here in Forest Lake. And I admit it, I'm old, I'm not as coordinated as I could be. And I am often not as fast on the keypad, or I punch it wrong, or I, innumerable things. And I do have some concerns about traffic backing up on Forest Road. I truly do. I realize that, that you believe that it's going to be, you know, differing hours, because you've got the differing kinds of, of community members. But I am concerned about traffic backing up on Forest Road, and I'm hoping that there's going to be a little bit of stacking space there somehow, before you hit the gate. Because you got somebody, well, my 18-foot trailer, it's, it's just a big honky trailer, and it, that and my, my truck, there's just not a lot of room for stacking, and that would be like immediate stacking out on the Forest Lake Boulevard if there's somebody behind me. So as, as we do further review of this...
Sure. Can I just note for the record, if you don't mind, Chair Commissioner Young, the building is 60 foot wide, it looks like the gate is maybe set back 40 feet. We've got 20-foot parking stalls, we've got a 24-foot drive-out, we've got another set of parking stalls, plus a 30-foot setback. So we've got 50, 75, well over 100 feet.
So the gate isn't going to be until the back of those, the west side of those buildings?
That's correct, yes.
Perfect. That makes me feel much, much better. The, the stormwater is going to be private stormwater. I expect that these ponds are going to have a significant amount of sediment going to them, just because of the uses and, and what you've got going on in the outdoor storage area. Making sure that you've got provisions and how you are set up for the routine maintenance of those stormwater ponds, so that you don't lose capacity, is going to be a really big deal for this facility. I think it's needed, I think it's going to be a great addition to Forest Lake. It's, it's going to be fascinating to me to see how this develops over the next 10 years and, and some of the lessons that we'll learn.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Tim? Can you speak briefly to the utilities that will be included with each unit? They're different sizes. We talk about kitchens and baths. What type of utilities? Are they going to have heat? Are you going to have gas lines run to them? Septic lines, what are we thinking?
Yeah, so I would say there's a variety of ways to approach this, and if you looked at how the market has been done, Columbus won, Woodbury being one, Big Lake being one, there's a couple of them. But again, our initial vision is that each single unit will have a dedicated panel, right? Whether it's 150 amp, whether it's 200 amp from an actual electrical component, right? Separate meter, again, billed to that owner right there. We envision hydronic in-floor heat, right, which is controlled as well for those, for those people. That's, that's an electric use, right? It's not a gas use. And then we envision water being stubbed in at the first level, and then potentially there's a mezzanine level build-out. These buildings are about 20 feet clear. There was a question in here about kind of the overall height of the structure, you know? I would say on a, on a 412 pitched roof, this height's probably 34 to 35 feet, well underneath kind of the 45-foot max height for the, for the airport. And so then, really, it's, it's the infrastructure we're putting in there, right? Water, hot, cold, per unit, electric, and then we're wiring in probably 10 or 12 110 utility outlets, right? And then from there, the, the end owner is doing what they desire on the inside, right? Maybe they're, maybe they're saying, we want a 210 volt, right? And, and they're doing that, but the capacity is there, right? It, it would be hard as a developer to guess what the end use of capacity of each of one of these units are. I also think, you know, the nature of this industry is a lot of them are reserved, right? Which is, this is the unit I want here, right? And so you're able to catch some of that infrastructure and upgrades through the kind of normal development process, or it's, or it's dealt with after, after we've sold it to the, to the homeowner.
Could I also just note for the record?
Don't say homeowner.
Sorry, you're right. Scratch that, we'll scratch that.
Property.
Unit owner.
Property owner.
Unit owner.
If I could just note for the record, and I apologize, I don't print myself a staff packet, and I don't want to change the visual for you, but if I remember right, I do believe the city will require these to be sprinkled.
There, you have listed a comment like that? I think the discussion was you guys were looking at it.
We need to look into it, but they, because of the, the nature of the uses, the multi-tenant ness, there may be the requirement for them to be sprinkled as well, so does add that additional, I want to say utility, but also protection for the units. We'll, we will continue. I couldn't remember at the top of my head if we made that determination or not.
Other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Jesse? I have one. You were mentioning that people will be able to park in the unit as well as have one car in front of it. So like, if I had my 25-foot enclosed trailer, and there was a unit on each side, would I still be able to make the corner to get in there? If I was going to go to my unit?
Yeah, I mean, so let me rephrase this. Most people that have used these, have used these, open the door, pull in, close the door, because they are heated, because they are air-conditioned, right? That's how most of these are functioning. My comment was, is if you're in the middle of a car repair job, and you've got maybe your space full up with parts, you can park outside of it, right? So the question becomes is, you have to be there when that car is parked. It's not stored overnight, it's not a self-stored, right? So your question is, is if I'm your neighbor and I'm coming to back in my trailer, and I need you to move your car, is that, is that just kind of a, from a logistics standpoint, is that your question, or from a dimensional?
Well, I was just thinking, like, if you had one row of those where you had 15 people there on the same day, and you had 15 people park their cars outside, and you tried to make that corner to just bring your trailer around, it would, with the 50 feet, there really wouldn't be room.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, we've studied the average length of the allowable-sized trailer you can have on the roads, right? And we're not building a unit bigger than that, right? And then you start looking at, from a logistics standpoint, of some units being deeper, some units being wider, the orientation of the doors, or you've got maybe potential pull-through doors, right? And so if I'm a car person and all I have is antique cars, any of these units probably work for me, right? If I've got the longest, largest toy hauler, maybe I've got a unit here in that building, if you can go to the end of that building. Yeah, you know, I've got some units like that, that maybe have wide-open radiuses that come in. So, but we're, we, we need to absolutely get that right. Like, as a developer and somebody who's selling something, like, we, we have to absolutely get that right, and that'll be something we study further.
Okay. Martin?
My question is about security. Say I own a unit, and right across, right across from me is Paul's unit, and he's inside on a, on a Friday afternoon, and I look over and I see he's got a 1969 GTO, mint condition, orange, in there, and I go like, I don't think Paul is deserving of that anymore. What type of security? You have cameras, are they monitored by a human so that they could call the cops and have the cops there when I start to exit? What type of security is, is going to be?
Yes, I can talk, I'm happy to talk theoretically, right? So typically, the HOA and the developer are going to provide access security into the property, right? That's what we're concerned about, is into the property. All of these units come pre-wired with low voltage wiring, and almost any one of these unit owners ultimately are putting in their own security in their system, because of that vehicle, because of the, the investment they have in there. So it comes pre-wired with it, and, and most of those are, again, because it's their own private unit, they're maintaining their own contents in there. So it's, it's kind of a, a specific layer for them, and then our, ours is more of kind of a perimeter access control security, which ultimately the HOA is responsible for as well.
I was, one other thing. Do you, as the overseer of the HOA kind of thing, if you think that somebody is, is running a meth lab in there, do you have keys to get in there to, to check it out? I mean, stuff like that?
Yeah, so, so ultimately, the HOA is eventually controlled by the owners' association themselves, right? So most of these will have a developer mechanism, or an initial owner development mechanism, when the majority have been sold and turned over, then that board gets turned over by the owners in there, and they can set their own rules, their own regulations at that time.
Other questions?
Do you have a ballpark price point for the units?
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's all based on square footage, and so you've got some people that need literally a third stall, right? I need 400 square feet, and then you have some people, and that's a different price point, maybe a different financial position, and somebody says, I want a 3,000 square-foot deal. So I would say, if you look in the market, these are ranging anywhere between kind of that, that $110,000 range, all the way up to kind of that couple hundred thousand dollar range, depending on the square footage of some of these units.
You are getting a PUD with this as part of the project, and this always comes up, so we might as well look at the red herring in the room. You get a lot of flexibility with this development when we do a PUD. On the flip side, what's in it for the city to grant that PUD? Above and beyond, I'm just getting storage units. I don't need an answer today, but just be prepared that we're going to be wondering, what is the benefit to the community by giving you the flexibility of this PUD? Is it more stuff for the parks in general? Excuse me. Is it something that you do here? I, I don't have an answer for you there, but it's, but it's a question we always ask of developers, you know, what's in it for the city for granting you that flexibility? So just be prepared for that, because I know you're going to get it at the next, at the...
Next stage.
Preliminary, right? At the preliminary.
No, I, listen, Chair, I think it's a fair question. I think, you know, PUDs are used for that exactly, it's a flexibility for the developer, flexibility for the staff, but really, it's a partnership. You're working together to how do we develop this to the best interest of both parties? You know, my off-the-cuff response is, this is 30 acres, and it's heavily impacted with wetlands. And if, I'm struggling on what a development would be for a single building, because that's a trigger into a PUD, right? Is a second building on 30 acres, right? So 500,000 square-foot giant cross-dock distribution, I, I don't know, I can't think of an investment that would make this be a single use. So I think who's ever developing this parcel, anytime down the road, is looking at a PUD, just due to the sheer size of it, and the fact that you're going to need two footprints, right? The other thing I would say is, you know, again, you're taking a single PID that's zoned and classified in agricultural basis, right? Which is a couple thousand dollars a year on tax basis. You've got a local developer and local owner investing in the city, but now you're going out and you're creating, you know, potentially 100 to 150 individual PID taxable parcels that I would argue are, you know, several hundred thousand dollars apiece. Now, I get tax basis goes to the county and the city, and there's a portion and a proration there. But I do think that's a, I do think that's a significant benefit, and I would also say that, that tax basis is primarily on private components of it, compared to a bunch of public infrastructure to support it. So that, that's my quick response to you. I guess I want to say I recognize the PUD, I appreciate it, I think it does allow us to work in partnership, and we'll come back with a more articulated answer for you in the next meeting.
Perfect.
One last thing. What is the thought behind the outdoor storage? If these are all private garage condominiums, what's the thought with the additional storage outside that's going to be visible?
That may be visible.
Yeah.
May be visible.
It's, that's, I mean, that's probably 700 feet off of the frontage road. If I was guessing, right? So I think it's hard to scale off that, I really do. You know, our, our thought was you get seasonality components into these, into these, you know, recreation vehicles, you get some components like that, or you get somebody who says like, I have a horse trailer, it doesn't need to be stored inside, but I can't park it in front of my house, so I'm going to put it back there, and I know it's safe and protected, and by the way, that outdoor storage is only allowed to people that are condo unit owners, right? And so that, that was kind of our thought process behind that.
But that would also be available for the two business buildings that you're, they would be, that's where they would have to do their outside storage?
That's correct, yes.
I will note, it was brought up earlier, that outdoor storage, if it is visible. There is some kind of woodland, I think, if I remember correctly, that's separating those two areas, so it could be designed in a fashion that it might not be visible at all. I'd kind of forgotten, black and white paper, I forget about the natural areas around.
Okay, before we wrap this up, I don't hear any big naysayers, but does anyone have a last comment that they definitely need to see something to make this move forward, or have we got our answers for now? The next time we'll see this is pollinarium plant, I believe?
Correct.
We are going to be expecting you all to not deviate significantly from our regular landscape plan. Especially since you're making this as a community, and you've got the grill space and the, you know, the cool areas.
We'll work together on a, on a good landscape design. I think some of the commission knows that we've been working on and updated landscape ordinance, because we do have some interesting calculation methods that do require significant landscaping. I don't know that, if that new ordinance will be back before you, before this plat comes. So just note, giving you the heads up, that we're going to have some ordinance amendments coming forward on that.
Last call for comments, commissioners. Hearing none, any closing comments? Otherwise, thank you for coming tonight, look forward to seeing you next time.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, appreciate your time, we're excited to be here, and great staff, and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. We'll move on to, on to item eight B. Excuse me, that's a, also a concept plan review from McKinley Creek Estates, two one one four five Fontaine Avenue North, Joshua Markham Builders Incorporated, PZ twenty-five dash thirteen fifteen. Abby, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chair Gerard. Mark Olson of Joshua Markham Builders has submitted an application for concept plan review for a new thirteen-lot, single-family residential subdivision to be located at two one one four five Fontaine Avenue North off of the southeast side of Clear Lake. That's a lot to just take in at the moment. But up on your screen right now, we've got a series of vacant or semi-vacant, underutilized parcels located off the south side of Clear Lake that's being proposed to be a new single-family residential subdivision. Property is accessed off of Fontaine Avenue right now, which connects to Highway ninety-seven. So it is kind of a, a jog to get in and back and around into that subdivision land area. I'm not sure if folks are familiar, but there is one single-family residence on the property right now that would be removed, may be removed.
Pardon? One, one? One what that might be removed?
Single-family, there is an existing residence.
Okay.
I don't know the condition of the residence, but-
That, that helps me understand.
It's not the big, the one house with the, about eight thousand square foot garage?
I don't know, but there might, could be some garage condos available in the future if they need a place to put their personal property. If these keep running concurrently with one another, right? So the lots conform to the minimum requirements for the single-family residential zoning district. The seventeen acres total, but the net developable is about nine acres. So they're, they're close to meeting the minimum one point five lots per acre requirement in the comprehensive plan. There's a lot that still needs to be done. We're at concept plan review, things like wetland delineations, all the things to really vet out, um, that net developable acres, but we're pretty close to meeting comp plan requirements. As part of our land subdivision requirements, point nine acres would be required for parkland dedication, and we haven't discussed with the applicant fiscal land dedication. This isn't an area that would be required to have land for parkland. There's parkland adjacent to the property, and I'll bring up at least a proposed trail that would head, um, along two property lines, the north property line getting into that adjacent park. Forgive me, I don't remember the park's name off the top of my head.
Clear Lake Park?
That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't gonna say it so everybody didn't. But it would, actually, that trail would connect up with an existing trail. We'd combine the two to get into that Clear Lake Park. It's a really important trail connection for the city because it provides safe pedestrian access for everybody on the southeast corner of Clear Lake. It not only provides them access, um, kind of around that lake and into the kind of Forest Road neighborhood, but it can get you on the Hardwood Creek Trail, heading down, all the way into downtown, and all the way to the school. So this really is a really important, um, trail connectivity component for us. Street layout, as I mentioned, the property currently is accessed off of Fontaine Avenue. Fontaine Avenue is an undersized roadway, and the developer has been advised that the city would, city staff is recommending that Fontaine Avenue be improved up to the property's boundary, and they would improve their roadway through the development site. Their understanding of that need to improve Fontaine Ave-, widen and improve Fontaine Avenue for safety purposes, if we're putting in thirteen more homes through here. Doesn't seem like a lot, but this is the only access in and out, and it does extend beyond the city's minimum, maximum requirement of six hundred feet for a cul-de-sac. So we cap our cul-de-sac widths or lengths because we really don't want to have a lot of people, um, on a dead-end, long dead-end cul-de-sac, one way and one way out. We have explored with this, um, developer, alternative ways to try to get the cul-de-sac through. There's just no way to get secondary access to the site without buying other private existing residential property in the area. Let's see, sidewalks and trails, there would be, uh, those pedestrian connections that we've talked about. Some of that we still have to work through with that concept from concept plating of exactly where some of those easements and sizes and things will line up. Overall, like I noted in the last one, this is concept plan review. These are non-binding comments. The intent really is, hey, guys, what do you think? Here's the things that we already kind of see might be issues. Things like stormwater drainage, ponding, tree inventory preservation, wetland impacts, watershed review. Lot of that is a lot more detail that will come later. But generally speaking, this is your opportunity to share what you like, what you don't like, concerns you might have, and direction to the developer. So Mark Olson with Joshua Markham Builders is here. Otherwise, you have any questions for him or me?
Any questions to staff? I have one for you, Abby. It has to do with the length of the cul-de-sac. I think that's more of a city question. I believe in your report, it states that, um, this will have fire hydrants in it?
Yes, so this is-
Is that the main reason we don't have long cul-de-sacs is for fire?
It's no, because you could have a tree that could go down and block the road. You could have all sorts of different hazards that could happen. This is an area that is not served by city water. This development will pull water through and make water available, um, to an, a lot of proper, potentially a lot of properties in due time on the southeast side of the lake. Those hydrants are just one added benefit, and one of the reasons that you could say there's a public benefit to allowing the extra-long cul-de-sac that would allow for the development that's pulling the public infrastructure through.
So, so they're gonna bring water to the, to the parcel?
They're gonna bring water to this parcel.
And where do you, and where, where do we have water on the other side of ninety-seven?
Pulling it from the east here, if you look up on your screen there. We're pulling it from the east, so we're pulling it from, uh, the Forest Road neighborhoods.
Oh, okay. They have water?
They have water.
I honestly don't know what has water back there and what-
Yeah, I mean, so when you look at it, most of the prop-, the properties along Fontaine, none of them do, I don't believe any of Floral Bay does. So you're really starting to provide public services to an area that is not only really underserved, but my understanding suffers from pressure issues and, uh, potentially, um, if I remember right, just quality issues. This is an area where we're gonna, if we haven't already seen wells start to fail, they're going to in due time, and the land area is so small, water table's so high, to be able to build, dig new wells is, there's, there's cause for concern for drinking water in the, in the area, so.
Other questions to staff?
You mentioned that they're gonna improve Fontaine?
Yeah.
Is, is that, uh, for the development, right?
Yeah, so Fontaine will be improved up to the development's driveway. So, and I should have, this isn't the best map, I could pull up one of my mapping platforms. This is just an undersized, underdeveloped roadway. They will expand it and improve it, um, up to and then into their development.
So are the people that live there right now, are they gonna be, uh, assessed?
They will not be assessed. It is because the new development is adding on to that additional need in that existing underdeveloped road. Does that make sense? So it's, yeah.
Susan?
Right away with there, um, on the-
Let me unplug for a second and get a different platform.
Yeah, um, but that, on the south side of Fontaine there, it's a pretty good grade. So are they gonna have enough width to be able to, to widen that road out? I, as I, as I, as I drove the street on the south side of Fontaine, some of those properties come fairly close to the road.
They do. We won't be able to widen the road to the city roadway standards, we know that. I think right now, if I remember right, it might only be a twenty-two-foot wide travel lane, if I remember right, and we're trying to get to twenty-eight. I think our, it's much still under our city standard, but it's making, uh, you know, not great condition better, more conforming.
I got you.
Hold that non-conforming thought.
I will. I've got a note for it.
Please. Which one of us gets to say the, the S-word?
Um, you, you got it.
When, when we further discuss this, the way that the, the lots are structured, and because of the, the length of the, the cul-de-sacs, I am not sure where you're going to put snow. And this area does have some microclimate that, that they get. If Forest Lake gets snow, they, they do. So, just when we talk further and, and as you are, are, are working up your, your further plans, where will that go? Because, um, especially down there, some of those, those pie-shaped areas are really narrow where the driveways are gonna go, and, um, it's gotta go somewhere. Abby, is this going to be a public street? So the city crews will be plowing in here?
I believe so. I don't believe that we've contemplated this as a private street. Yeah, um, developer might be able to speak more. This generally, the city doesn't allow for new private streets. So I don't believe, we've talked about it, okay? But I think we've assumed it would be public.
That's gonna be a bear to plow.
But I think the developer would love to add to that conversation when you're ready.
Okay.
Other questions to staff? Hearing none? Did you have something, Abby?
No.
Oh. If you'd like to come up, introduce yourself, spend a couple minutes telling us about your project, and just let, you were here for the early one, we'll just bombard you with questions, don't worry.
I don't think I could do as good as that kid, bud. I'll give it my best. He was pretty good. Uh, my name's Mark Olson, seventy-eight sixty-seven Eastwood Road, Moundsfield, Minnesota, five-five-one-one-two. Uh, the project, I think, is gonna be great for that area. I wanna address your last thing with snow. I would love to put in a private road, not, not to add lots or anything, but just to cut down on the stormwater in this area. That's the main reason. And I will take, I'll make an HOA, I'll put, then I'll put in central water sprinkler system, then I'll get the lights in, I'll get the cluster mailboxes in, blah, blah, blah. I would love to do that just for the fact of stormwater. I don't care. You wanna go private or public, it don't matter to me. When they come in to plow, and you've got them lots on this side, them lots are really deep lots, okay? That's number one. Number two is, on this side, you can throw all the snow you want to that side. Just tell your city, guys, let's not pile it all in the driveway. Let's throw it all to that side, or as much as you can, you know? And then you can always knock it down, too. So the side that doesn't have lots, you throw a lot of snow there.
If I'm running a snow plow, and I am going, let's just say, toward the top of the page here, I can't throw the snow to the left of that road.
You can keep pushing it that way.
So, so you would be asking that plow driver to get out and readjust his blade so instead of throwing to the right, as they all do?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't know. Don't, don't they just, inside the truck? Oh, they don't? Okay.
That's what I think they would do.
I, I, I didn't know that.
A, a, a little guy can do that, okay? Some of those, a pickup, he can, he can get a little bit of adjustment.
I see your point there. Well, you got a lot of them.
I do have the note of snow storage is of concern. Snow storage and plowing, and the developer's note that he'd like to create it as a private road. I think that's, you know, things we can discuss if the city is favorable as we keep our conversations moving forward.
Right.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a really desirable place to live?
Oh, it's gonna be great. Uh, where it's got the pond and you got the property line and you got the existing neighborhood that we're pulling water off of, there's a line of fir, some cedar, some old growth trees there. And, oh, you can make it out on that overveil. Right, yeah.
Some perimeter trees all around.
Right there. And the roads, unfortunately, you got a nice field there, and the road's going right through the woods on this side. But you're go-, I wanna try to get like stormwater, stormwater ponding in front of them trees, because I wanna preserve them as a, a buffer. Mostly because the houses I'm gonna put in here, they're not gonna be starter homes. They're really luxury-priced homes, market-priced homes, so. And with the long yards, sorry, with the long yards, they're, they're gonna be nice. It's gonna be a nice addition to that area.
It's a nice infill opportunity.
Yeah. It's, it's nice, it's, it's, most of, most of the wet is wet, most of the dry is really dry. It's sand. There's no muck, peat, or anything there. It's, it's all nice sand. And the road kind of, where it's laid out, creates a buffer from the folks down below, towards the lake, too. And it's, it is up higher, so.
Excuse me, so, um, you just got done saying they're gonna be not starter homes?
Yeah.
Are they gonna have access to the lake?
Well, you know, that's something I'd like to ask y'all. There is an access down here, right there.
That, that is not a public access.
So it's-
What is it?
So I will say, the city council adopted regulations that indicate all of the roadways that are plotted into the lake are for public use. It is for public access, but not inherently a boat-launch access.
It says no boat launching. I'm not intending, what I was, my thought was, that if we could get-
We cannot give any, grant any exclusive use, so you're, there wouldn't be any exclusive use. Your residents are welcome to walk down there and use it as much as the rest of the neighborhood.
So if I have a dock that's in the lake?
There are no, being that I live on the lake, not this one, but, uh, there are no docks on accesses. That's right in their ordinance.
Right.
It just is not allowed. If you don't have a buildable residence, you cannot have a dock.
Got you. Okay.
And, and the access is for emergency? You know, especially in the wintertime, if somebody goes that, or, you know, emergency accesses?
Okay.
For fire and rescue?
I will say, um, a couple of things just to note. Any of those properties come up along there for sale? They're up for private property ownership?
I, oops.
And then my understanding is, I don't know if it's this access or further down where Fontaine first comes in, but there's a significant snowmobile traffic coming through here. I don't know if we've got any avid snowmobilers. I'm looking at Commissioner Sealy, because I know he lives on Clear Lake.
I live on the other end of the lake.
That's what I kind of thought.
I have snowmobile over here, so I don't know how they come up out of there, but-
There's a, there's, somehow they're coming through here to get into the downtown some.
Well, I am inquiring with a couple owners down there that have, uh, more, uh, setback from the property line, per se, where, hey, I'll rent your piece of property, put a dock out in one pontoon, you know? And then folks can go down and go that way. Or if he's got a dock out and he's got room for another boat on the other side.
Historically, there have been some less-than-cordial interactions with folks because you, you tend to think of this piece of property that is a city right-of-way, but you've been mowing it for the last twenty-five years. And you tend to think of it as yours, and so there is some history there that as, as you talk to folks, you will hear.
Oh, you go to this one, you'll find out who owns that pieceman. And I'm not, that's all I got to say about that.
As, as I look at your lots, lot, uh, twelve, eleven and twelve, we require eighty feet at the setback line, correct, Abby, on single-family?
I'd have to look. I don't know all of our standards.
Yeah. I'm, I'm a little concerned at, at that setback, especially on twelve, that you're gonna get eighty there. I think the angle's big enough, probably on lot eleven, but it looks tight on lot twelve. And I, I just wanna make sure you come in with all conforming lots. I don't care how you get that eighty feet, if you gotta move that line a little bit because you're at the beginning here, but we'll need to see all conforming lots.
Um, Chair Gerard, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
The property is under the one point five minimum for the comp plan conformance. If lots need to be adjusted slightly to meet that minimum conformity, is that something that the planning commission is favorable, favorable to, knowing he needs to meet the minimum density in this district?
I don't think he's talking about density. I don't think we're worried about- I don't think we're worried about minimum density on this. It's just that, um, for instance, if you shifted the property line on lot 13 a little bit toward the top of the page, then you could slide 12 and slide 11.
Right, but that might change lot 13's lot developable, uh, square footage. I'm just saying that we,
These lots will have water and sewer?
These will, uh, yes, these will have water and sewer.
Personally, I'm okay with a little smaller lot. I, when we don't have water, then
Yeah.
it gets dicey, cuz I need so many feet to the sewer.
I know we wanna, you know, we don't wanna like, this isn't the, um, low de, low-medium density where we're down to 7,500. You know, these are fairly sizable sized lots, but if we need to shift those lot sizes a little bit to meet the minimum density requirements, I just wouldn't wanna go onto the record and hold so true that we need to meet every single zoning requirement. I'm just throwing that out there.
So, Commissioner, your thought on that?
You know what? If Met Council wants to try and say that we don't have, that we lack a lot on here to meet minimum density, um,
I know, it's just by our,
I would like to say pound sand, but I, I can't do that.
But it's not the Met Council. It's by our own laws that we can approve subdivisions that don't conform to our comp plan. So we, we made those rules. We, we maybe didn't love those rules, but we made those rules. And if he can't meet the 1.5 minimum density and does not conform to the comp plan. Now, I will say, I think that by the time we take out some of that pub, required public infrastructure on the wetlands, and there's wetland buffers, and the area for the trail, and things like that, maybe those numbers will shift. Maybe it'll come to 1.49, and it'll be substantially conforming with the comp plan. I just,
Private roads with?
We cannot exempt roadways from it, I know. We can't even exempt storm ponds, and we don't have control over storm pond sizing, so.
Commissioners, other concerns or other questions or input you would like to give to developer? Any other questions for us today?
No, I appreciate your input.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you, and when you have the preliminary plat. I believe that's the next time we'll see you.
Okay.
Yep.
Have a good summer.
You too, thank you.
Abby, is there a requirement for a neighborhood meeting on this one?
I believe all of our, uh, preliminary plats do. I'd have to, I'd have to take a look.
It would be to your advantage to start to get to know some of the, the neighbors in that area?
I think I'll get personally hand out a flyer of what I'm doing in the coming week. Along with my card, introduce myself, Tim, this is my cell's rep here. And, uh, we'll do that personally, and meet each one of them, and let them know what to look forward to.
Most of them have been there a long time, and they're very protective.
Yeah, yeah, well, we see some really nice flower gardens in Mans here. I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm impressed, though.
So I think what Commissioner Young is pointing out is that the city requires a neighborhood meeting at preliminary plat. So we'll coordinate all of that together. But I think she's just suggesting that maybe you wanna reach out before those legally required meetings.
All right, we'll move to, uh, our update part. We'll start with you, Abby, since I think you have the most updates.
Uh, I do have, in your packet is the updated city meeting calendar. Just as a reminder, in July, our meetings will change from 7:00 to 6:00 same night. But the hope is that we could get out by 7:15. Look at this, guys. Look at this, we're moving right along. Um, no, the intent of this is to start our meetings earlier so that they are potentially getting done earlier, if only by default that we started an hour earlier. So everybody can get home safely and not in the dark, and start another day tomorrow well-rested. So, this meeting started at 7:00. You will have another meeting in two weeks. We do have another full planning commission agenda, June, two weeks from today, 25th. Um, that also will be at 7:00, and then July will start our 6:00 meetings. Um, I believe you will also have a first meeting and July meeting as well. So, we have a lot, um, coming through my offices right now in terms of just a little bit of everything. Um, I also wanted to let, um, at least the counts, or the commission, know that on Monday night, the council heard a request from the landowner at 8241 North Shore Trail, which is land that is, that Pizza Pub is on. So just a little bit of background for some planning commissioners is, uh, 20 years ago, the property was developed with a 2,500-square-foot restaurant, had been there since the dawn of time. That landowner had come to the city and said, hey, can we tear this down and build a new building? And built what is the building that Pizza Pub is currently in today, much greater than the previous sized property was developed. Um, as part of that, there were variances granted, which included a variance to some parking regulations, but accounted for like some of that boat traffic coming in. Long story short, since the building started operating, there have been parking problems. And the success of Pizza Pub has just kind of expanded those complaints to the city. The owner was notified of some violations that occurred in the right-of-way recently, where they went to improve some area in the boulevard. And as a means to help, um, find a solution, went to the council last week to ask about their consideration of the, uh, putting in on-street parking on North Shore Trail adjacent to the Pizza Pub property to help alleviate some of these public nuisance, public safety concerns that have been there for a very long time. And the city council, um, did indicate that they were favorable to this. I won't say that it was a majority, and I won't say that it was even a, it was a majority, a 3-1. I won't say that it was a strong majority. I think that, um, former planning commissioner Miller was very concerned, um, but did vote 3-1. Commissioner, council member Larson did not vote in favor of this. Those will be coming back before the council for formal approval. Be working with the owner to kinda look at how we potentially get this done. But I just wanted to let you know, and, um, and this was, Commissioner Young had asked me to bring this up, of this is a circumstance where, when there are legal non-conformities or historic youth permits, variance requests, the decisions that are made by the city have long-lasting implications that can create nuisances later down the road. So this is why your work is really important, to kind of think about that long-term effect, and what we have to do 20 years later sometimes to alleviate those issues that could be caused by your, by city decisions. Does that make sense? I'm just giving you the update. Commissioner Young asked me to.
And, and, and to follow up, it has been our policy, not written in stone, but our policy that if somebody comes in, um, with a request to build something new, there, um, we've had several of them where, where they're, they're, they're doing, they're building, and, and we would love to say, no, now that you're building, you have to come in strict compliance with our rules. What we have said on several occasions is, you know what? You're making less of a problem, so we're, yes, we will work with you. Abby, could you talk, discuss what, what you and I talked about last night regarding those, that?
I'm really sorry, Susan, I have no clue what we talked about last night. I don't need to.
That our, that, that, if we were to allow continuing non-conformance, even though it's a less non-conforming, that we're still not in a position, for instance, on Pizza Pub, to say, no, you, you, you have to deal with your parking yourselves. We, we let, we let them have a, a variance, and so we need to be much more cautious in the future about holding the line on variances. And,
Variations. I think just in general, variations. And I will say, in that, in this one case that we're bringing up, and in most of the cases that we see where there's been historic approvals, this planning commission has held pretty firm. Here's our regulations, meet them. And appeals are made, or it ends up in the council lab. So, the council has ultimate appeal authority, um, but yes, there are longstanding, there are, what you do matters and can affect, you know, in essence, will affect a property for the next generation or two or more. I also just wanted to provide a couple, does anyone have any questions on that? Couple staffing updates. Um, we did hire our new code enforcement officer, Dan Pearson. He is the city's first permanently, this is, he does not wear multiple hats. So he is really unique for us. Um, permanent code enforcement officer. He is a quarter-time employee this year. I have made the request to the city council for their consideration to bump him to at least halftime, uh, 20 hours a week next year. But Dan is getting on-boarded, he's only three weeks in. Uh, very, very, you know, like 13 and a half hours a week. It's very nominal. But we're really trying to start getting him into a system of monitoring and seeing after our code enforcement complaints. So that is really exciting to have somebody just dedicated to that. And then also, we are currently hiring, um, for, and have, uh, vacancy for an assistant community development director. This is gonna be a planning manager, a planning EDA manager in the 2025 budget. We went out for the position and received two applicants, neither of them having any planning experience. So we reevaluated the job description, the title, the pay, went back to the council and said, hey, we're gonna have to sweeten the pot a little bit here. The first round of application reviews is June 23rd. If you know anyone that is even
I'm working at.
slightly experienced in this world, we're really looking for somebody to help support, um, you all and your work, mostly in land development, but they'll also help support some of the kinda crossover between planning commission and EDA, some of those long-range planning things. That's where I'm at. Any questions?
Questions for Abby? Hearing none, all right. Councilperson Larson?
Councilperson.
Oh, you don't have to get up, you've got a microphone right there.
That's okay, I can stretch my legs. I'm doing okay. Welcome. Thank you, Chairman Gerard, commissioners. Welcome, Martin. I hope you enjoyed your first meeting, and we're getting your feet underneath you here a little bit. I was out of town for the prior city council meeting. I was on vacation with my family in Germany, but I was here for Monday's meeting. Abby did a phenomenal job, just kinda hitting some of the highlights, a little bit of our meeting, and I think the big one was the Pizza Pub event there. We went over our audit, which I think was, we commented that we did very, very well. Very impressed with, uh, our bookkeeping. So, uh, with that, I really don't have too much, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions of you folks.
Questions for our councilperson? So, Martin Jeff is our liaison, so he brings information from the council, and he'll bring planning commission information to the council. So that's why he graces us with this present.
Y'all are starting the budget process?
We are. As always, you know, it's always a contentious subject. There's never enough money in the pot for all the little things that we got going on, but, um, we're, as always, try to be budget savvy, but we, there's things, there's needs and needs, and there's wants and wants, so, um, I think we all just have to sharpen our pencil on some of that stuff here, but it's just a start of the process.
And do either one of you wanna talk about the new program with the, the enhanced program with the EDA? For, um,
I certainly can, I don't, Jeff isn't as familiar with it. So the EDA historically has had a 10% reimbursable grant program that would give, uh, business owners 10% of a total project's cost with a maximum of $5,000 for exterior rehabilitation. Uh, our take on a facade improvement program, but we expanded it to allow for some other exterior improvements. Um, since COVID, we have not utilized the program at all. And part of that could be, um, lack of education and marketing. It could just be all the things. We don't have permanent EDA staff. It's, it's, it's me, and you guys got me, and, you know, like, I'm kinda, kinda got a lot going on. Um, but I worked with the EDA to expand the program to any commercial, uh, any essentially non-residential, so any commercial or industrial property. And there's three different kind of tiers. I still kept the word tiers in them, but three different kind of funding levels. They'll fund up to 50% of a project, um, that is $10,000 or less, with a maximum of $5,000. Or 25% of a project greater than $10,000, with a maximum of $10,000. So you'd have to spend, what would that be, $40,000 to get the 10? Is that how that works? My math isn't the greatest, but I did it.
You did good.
Yeah, I already had had some people in the hopper waiting, and so I think we might even have some applications on the EDA's agenda next month. Essentially, they've gotta submit their application form and estimate. We take a look, we get an agreement in front of the EDA, they can go do their work. Once they're done, they submit paid bills to me, we make sure the work's done, and then we give them money. And it really is just a commercial improvement incentive program. It's essentially what it is, is just trying to incentivize people to, to invest in their properties, so.
And this iteration has a parking lot improvement section, one of the tiers.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Just on a closing note, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to Abby for all her hard work on everything. Since we lost our other person to another job, I know she's got a lot on her plate, and I appreciate her dedication to everybody. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Nope, not tonight.
Susan?
Those of you that know Hannah Valento, she had her baby last week.
All right.
Henry.
Mom and baby doing well?
Yes, they are.
Uh, she thinks she'll only be out a few council meetings and then be back. So she's, she is taking maternity leave, but I think she plans to be back sitting at the dais maybe in another, within a month or two, so.
Gonna sneak the pass in that down here?
Well, all you gotta do is just like rock 'em with your foot, right? The whole time, so.
This, these folks remember my, my girl coming to.
Oh, yeah, my boys used to come to the planning commission meetings. Oh, yeah. That's about the look they had, too, like, really did. Jesse, congratulations on getting married last weekend. Did you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, nothing.
Hey, Martin, welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to tell you that, um, I'm here to learn and trying to absorb everything I can, and I'm open to constructive criticism. My former job was with the state of Minnesota as a corrections officer, so I'm used to people getting in my face and telling me exactly what they think. I expect that you will as well get in my face and tell me what I need to know, and, uh, and help me along. So I look forward to upcoming meetings.
The League of Minnesota Cities has some really great training.
Yeah, we've provided him with some, um, league resources. They don't necessarily, uh, offer a planning zoning-specific, um, training like they used to.
Yeah, they had some really good stuff.
They've got some really great paper documents. I actually, um, so we still have a vacancy. If you know anybody that's interested, send them our way. Happy to chat with anyone if they're interested. Um, my hope was after we get all seven, um, filled, that we might be able to take one of our meetings early fall and bring in a facilitator to just kinda go through some one-on-one planning zoning, you know, stuff. I do that all with you when you start, um, but it's really high level. It's some of the, the kinda tips, tricks, do's, don'ts, that sort of stuff, legal stuff, that's really more specific to planning and zoning. I think we try to get somebody out to do a little bit more training with you guys, so.
And I have nothing to add, uh, so thank you all tonight for your wisdom and input. And the chair's looking for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. It's an unavoidable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, see you in a few weeks.